Thank you, everybody. We're going to finish the floor before we have one person sign off. Speaker, let's go.
How's it going, everybody? I just wanted to say thank you for everybody in the community and everybody on the floors. It's been an honor to work with these guys for the last, yeah, for the last two and a half, three, four years. You know, I definitely will do it again, and I know that they've got the right, right idea for our school, our kids, our community, and I want to make sure everybody stays on that and keeps the school going strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we'll move to item nine L, which is the findings. So we have the new reading, the question on here, we want to tell their...
I don't know if you gentlemen can hear me, but we have moved to item nine L, which is the findings. So I think the floor belongs to Mr. Stormer and Mr. Nichols. Is that correct? We're presenting the findings at this time.
Mr. Martin-Delf, I heard you're ready for, ready for the findings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will go through these. If you all have questions, you may just have to raise your hands so help me and I can respond, and then we'll, we'll work to bring you closer to the microphone to see if we can answer. Again, I'm Fred Stormer, again, with Kobe Nichols of the Underwood Law Firm, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to work through one of these applications and agreements with the school district. Before we get started, one of the things that's important just to confirm, and that's part of our findings here tonight, is just to acknowledge that there's no trustee, and Mr. Martin-Delf, you don't have any interest in this project with Open Road or Blue Jay Solar. Our records don't indicate any, but I know you just had an election, so I wanted to make sure and confirm that no one's got a conflict of interest.
That's correct. Mr. Stormer, there is no conflict, and our two new members have signed up on that form.
Very good. I appreciate that. So what we're here is that before you can approve an application and enter into one of the 313 agreement or an agreement for limitation on appraised value for payments and operation taxes, the Texas legislature wants the school board to make sure that moving forward, the application and the agreement is in its interest. And so in order to do that, there's certain criteria that they want school boards to consider. It's going to have to deal with property's eligibility, applicant's eligibility under the program, to make sure that in the long term, you guys will likely receive more MNO taxes and a variety of other things that we will go through tonight. And you guys have viewed the, you've reviewed findings in length that I presented to you, about 135 pages of document altogether. We will not go through all of those. I've obviously, your guide is already well enough, but really, the first 14 pages, 13 pages of what I sent you, contains the actual finding and behind it is the supporting documentation that contains the application itself, some information from Secretary of State, Comptroller Certification, their economic impact analysis, and the proposed agreement. You've already heard from Mr. Brav, the school finance report, and so we won't cover those portions as we go through the findings, but where I'd like to start off, if you guys are able to follow along with me, is on page four, the first thing that the board needs to consider is whether or not this property that is going to be subject to this limitation on appraised value qualifies under the program. Now, chapter 313 only allows certain types of taxable property to qualify for these tax incentives, manufacturing, research and development, nuclear energy, and renewable energy also what eligible properties for tax incentives. What we know here is we've got a solar farm that is 210 megawatts, and a solar farm that size and with a budget of 121 million dollars meets the eligibility requirements to receive these tax incentives. The other main concern is that we want to make sure that this agreement would be beneficial to the district in the long run, meaning that they've said a number of 25 years, that they want to make sure it's reasonably likely that the district will receive more maintenance and operation taxes than will pay out incentives or the benefit of the incentives that Blue Jay Solar will receive. And if you'll turn with me to the last couple of pages, page six, IOIISC FOF 006, you can see where I've taken a look at the Comptroller's Economic Impact Study, the actual chart, they've drawn this analysis, what we call the 25-year test. And if you look at that column, or it's this estimated ISB MNO and tax letting, we know that over the course of 25 years, they, on the estimated property value supplied in the application that the district is going to receive or expected to receive, approximately 6.4 million dollars, whereas when we run the calculation on the amount of incentives that they would likely receive over 10 years with a limitation period under the agreement, they're looking at approximately 5 million. So we passed that $25 million test, we know about 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars better over the course of 25 years. So we passed that test, we can move on to the next consideration, and that is qualifying jobs requirement. By statute, they're supposed to create 10 new qualifying jobs. However, if industry standard for the size of the project does not meet that 10 job requirement, then the board has the authority to waive that minimum job requirement, provided they are going to commit to creating the number of jobs equal to industry standard. So what we know is that solar farms have made a lot of jobs toward the construction base. They will be a V I of activity, but once they hit commercial operations, it really is pretty self-sustaining. It doesn't require very many full-time employees to maintain and operate our solar farm. What we found in the industry standard, compared this to other agreements by the Comptroller and other information that we received from other developers, is about one full-time job for every 250, possibly even 300 megawatts, is all that you need. What Blue Jay Solar has committed is one full-time job for their 210-megawatt project. So it's not, it's not a lot of additional employment for the school district or in the school district, but it doesn't exceed the industry standard, and they are eligible for job labor if approved by the school board. If you turn to page seven, Board Finding Number Three, the job that they are creating has to meet certain criteria. It has to be considered a full-time job, that means it has to provide at least 1,600 hours of work annually, it has to pay health insurance, it has to provide health insurance and pay 80% of those premiums, and it has to pay 110% of the county's manufacturing wage. What we know is that that minimum salary then has to be 41,561 dollars, and this job can't replace somebody else, and it can't be transferred in from some other position in the state of Texas. And what they have committed is to create that minimum qualifying job. Board Finding Number Five, if they have any jobs that, that aren't going to meet that minimum standard or be considered a qualifying job, meaning they won't provide health insurance or it's not going to be full-time, then they are going to be, are to pay a wage that's equal to 100% of the county average wage, which we know is nearly a thousand dollars, Board Finding Number Six, this is what we call the determining factor test. What our legislators didn't want to happen is for school districts to provide tax incentives that were going to be coming and making large capital investments in your community anyway, regardless of the tax incentives. And so what we try to do in conjunction with the Comptroller's certification is to verify whether or not construction of this project in the state of Texas and in IOIISC is, is necessary to receive these tax incentives. What we know is this project is still in the development stages. We've certified that they don't have any binding contract, and we know that Open Road is a national company that's currently developing a variety of projects in Ohio, Maryland, in Virginia, and possibly throughout the East Coast. We also know that added more taxes, property taxes, particularly school districts in general, are one of the highest single fixed costs for renewable energy developers. And so without the tax incentives that are available under the 313 agreement, the, the capital that has been allocated for this project could be reallocated to development in some other state. Any questions so far as we're moving forward? Okay, excellent. Moving on to Board Finding Number Seven, Chris went over this as part of his report, and that is despite the market value, we know it's going to peak in 2023 at approximately 121 million dollars. For MNO purposes, the agreement will allow Blue Jay to only pay MNO taxes on 20 million dollars. And it's that difference between paying taxes on 121 versus 20 million for 10 years during the agreement that creates those tax incentives and savings that Chris went over in his financial report. That amount cannot be lower than that 20 million dollars. It's determined by statute based on the amount of manufacturing property, taxable property in your district. Board Finding Number Eight, the revenue gains, Chris went over those in his report. We know those are going to be $750,000 if the project is built. We know the full value of the project is available for your INS tax base, and we also know that we're going to pay that MNO protection payment if it becomes due, which we, which we believe based on the incident system for the first year of the limitation period. Having only created one job, we don't think that is going to create any burden on your facilities. You have plenty of room to handle any additional students that would come with that one job. Again, the legislature didn't want us to create 500 new jobs in school district that didn't have the capacity to handle them. Board Findings Number 10 and 11 are the estimated taxes that would be paid with and without the agreement. Again, those were referenced in Chris's report and on a one-page summary sheet, so I won't go over those again. That brings us to Board Finding Number 12. One of the things that the board must determine is that the application and the information in the application was true and correct when it was tendered and when it was presented to you all. We got done independently, both Underwood Law Firm and the Comptroller, the best we can to verify those objective parts of the application that we could, but there are a lot of subjective components concerning the estimated values of the property, the number of jobs it takes to comply with industry standard, the reasonableness of the commercial operations. Those are subjective qualities that are difficult to verify. What we know is that this application was tendered under oath, and that we are relying on the information in that application and the oath that they've sworn to in making a decision whether to approve this agreement tonight. And so in that respect, the application is a governmental record that we have relied on, and it is not uncommon for governmental bodies, particularly with regards to subjective questions, to rely on affirmations that someone has made in certified statement. And we know we can rely on those because that's a governmental, as a governmental entity and a governmental document, if they lie under oath, then they would be subject to perjury and criminal penalties. So in that respect, I think it's reasonable to rely on their oath. We are now at Board Finding Number Three at the bottom of page 10. One of the first things we discussed was whether or not the property was eligible under the program for tax incentives. The other component of that is whether or not the applicant is eligible for the incentives under the program. What we know is that chapter 313 requires that the applicant be a franchise taxpayer in good standing, not only registered to do business in Texas, but in good standing. What we have verified as of today is that they are a franchise taxpayer in good standing, and they will have to remain that way throughout the term of this agreement. Board Finding Number 14 at the top of page 11 is only property that is going to be within the boundaries of a reinvestment zone is eligible for the tax incentives. Your board meeting last month, you approved that reinvestment zone, we verified the boundaries of the reinvestment zone containing the project area, so we meet that criteria, and it will remain within a reinvestment zone. What we know also, via their certification, the application, is there are existing improvements within the boundaries of the project, but it is unrelated, which means that property that's there, to the extent it has value, will be taxed at its value by the owner of that property, and it is not subject to the terms of this agreement. Likewise, the land itself on which the property will be installed is also subject to taxes that will not qualify for this agreement. Board Finding Number 16 has to talk about some specific terms of the agreement, and I would like to spend a little time on this. If you guys want to acknowledge me, if you've got a hard copy, print it out. I would like to direct you behind that page, which is going to be page 91. This is the actual proposed agreement that will be presented to you for your consideration in your next agenda item. Again, this is about a 35-page document. I won't go over the entire thing for you, but I do want to hit some high points and give you an opportunity to ask us some questions. If you'll kind of flip through there with me, the first couple of pages are just the recitals that kind of recites the history of where we are and how we got here. Article one, in a contract this size, there are some particular words that have their own meaning with regards to this agreement and with regard to chapter 313. Those specific definitions and terms of are set out in article one. I do want to point out a few things in article two. If you'll turn to page 98 of the findings, I just want to review the time periods in question here of how this all unfolds, because even though you guys may approve the agreement tonight, what's known as the qualifying time period will not begin until October 1st of 2021, which means during that time end, and that qualifying time period will run through December 31st of 2023. That is important because during that qualifying time period, they must make a minimum qualified investment of $10 million. If they don't make the investment of $10 million, then this agreement would terminate by operation and law, and they would not be eligible for any tax incentives at that point. If they wanted to, to continue to build the project, they would have to submit another application, and would have to start this process over again if they wanted to qualify for new incentives. Secondly, I want to point out that the tax limitation here, there is a 10-year period where that the board, if they choose to accept this agreement, would only tax this property for the solar farm for maintenance and operation purposes at 20 million dollars. That begins January 1 of 2023, with 1 through December 31st of 2032. And I believe Chris pointed that out in his, in his one-page summary that he went over with you all. But the agreement doesn't simply end after the end of the limitation period. In order to still get all those tax incentives and not have to repay them, the applicant is required to maintain commercial operations, we call that maintain a viable presence for five years after the limitation period ends. And so technically, this is a agreement for 10 years of tax incentives that begins October 1, 2021, but doesn't actually end until December 31st of 2037. If they fail to maintain viable presence in commercial operations, including at least one qualifying job, all those tax incentives that they have received during that 10-year limitation period, they must pay back to the district at that time, including interest and penalties. So the agreement and the law has a pretty heavy handle to make sure that they meet their obligations under this agreement. Next, if you guys will flip through me a couple more pages to article four, this is the real meat of the agreement. This is where the agreement holds the protections for the district, and it will be on finding page 101. If you can see there in section 4.1, I've got some language that is in all capital letters, it is the intent of the parties of the risk of any negative financial consequences to the district in making the decision to enter into this agreement will be borne solely by applicant and not by the district. The first and foremost rule is the district shall not be harmed. We can't guarantee that you will receive the benefits under this agreement like you hoped for. The revenue protection payment is $750,000 because we don't know if the project will be built, we don't know if it's going to actually be appraised at the values that's anticipated, but what we can guarantee is you will be no worse off with this agreement than you would be without the agreement. And we have that opportunity to collect approximately 1.6 million dollars that Chris reviewed with the public hearing. And so the way we make sure that you are no worse off is every year of this study, or every year of this agreement, he will do a school finance study. He will compare the school district revenue, not the taxes, but the school district revenue that the district would receive without the agreement compared to what the revenue would be with the agreement. To the extent that you are worse off with the agreement than without, the company makes up that difference, and that's where we saw that one revenue protection payment of $979,000 in the first year of the limitation period. That's what's provided for in article 4.2, is kind of that lengthy formula that you see there. What we also know, and Chris touched on it, is that all of these calculations will be based on school finance law that's in effect at the time, it will be based on actual values for the property, and it will be based on actual school data, what your enrollment is, what your ADA is, when he comes up with those numbers. And so the only thing we know for sure is that revenue protection amount that he estimated is going to change, hopefully not much, but it will depend on what your local appraiser assesses the value of the property is and what your enrollment is at the time when those calculations are made. The other thing that comes up from time to time is that the agreement may need to be amended to match the amount of property, maybe for boundary shifts to change the schedule of construction if issues come up. Also, we know that the state auditor comes in and randomly conducts audits every year. There will be some additional expense and work that the district has to do. Any costs associated and arising from the district's involvement in this agreement, whether it's for label fees, third-party consultant fees, or whatever it is, will be billed back to the applicant. Again, the school district should not be out for revenue and cost for having to comply with this agreement, having or for having to amend this agreement so that the tax incentives can continue. Chris kind of went over the data for the calculations, whether it's going to be delivered on November 1st of every year, and any payments to do and owing, with the exceptions that I'll talk about in just a second, will be paid, must be paid by the, sorry, by January 31st of the following year. We know the costs for those calculations and the studies, again, are billed directly to Blue Jay Solar. They won't be something that the district receives they bill for. That's pretty much the meat of article four. Real quick, that article five, paying for extraordinary education-related expenses. If for some reason during the construction phase you have an influx of students that you don't receive funding for TDA that requires some additional expenses, if you have to hire an additional aide, if you have to hire to do an additional bus route in order to get kids home, to the extent the costs for those additional students created during that timeframe are funded by TDA, to the extent we can certify that they are, that those additional costs are created by the agreement and by the project, the applicant agrees to pay those expenses for the district. I'll be 100% honest with you, we've done about 160 of these agreements, we've never had to invoke this provision. I don't foresee it coming up, but it is your safety net that is available for you in case something does. We know, again, the district will not be worse off. That brings us to article six. These are the supplemental payments, that payment of $50,000 per year for that 15-year period that starts with the qualifying time period, and by law, they go for three years after the limitation period ends. We know that's 15 years total under this agreement, and we know the statutory limit is $100 per ADA or $50,000, whatever's greater. And in this case, the Comptroller certified the most recent hard values for you guys at 490 students based on the 18th, 19th school year, at 490, so what we know is $49,000 is less than $50,000, $49,000 at $100 per ADA, and so they have agreed to pay you the maximum of $50,000 a year for each eligible year at $750,000. Section 6.3, I'll just point this out in passing, this is the provision that I call a lottery ticket. Chapter 313 first was enacted, we didn't have that $100 per ADA limitation. School districts were able to freely negotiate an amount of their share of the tax savings that were outside of school funding formulas, and we would typically see districts receive 35% to 50% of the net tax benefit under one of these agreements before they instituted that ceiling. If the law changes, Blue Jay Solar has agreed to amend this agreement to provide for 40% of their net tax savings to be paid to the district as a supplemental payment. It's a nice thought, and they've agreed to do it, but I really don't see much of a chance, probably about the same odds as winning lottery, of the legislature changing that provision and you being able to get that 40%. But should it happen, we've got that provision in there and getting a little additional What we've calculated is, I think, under the, under the maximum terms that I've provided, I think somewhere around 19.5% of receiving their net tax benefits, so we could add another 20% to that if the law were to change. Real quick, I want to talk about section 6.5, its title annual limitation on page 27. We know the school district can't be any worse off by entering into this agreement, and so likewise, Blue Jay Solar wants some of those same assurances, and that's what the limitation is in section 6.5. They don't want to be any worse off having to make larger payments under the agreement than what they would have to pay if they were an ordinary taxpayer in your district. And so that's what section 6.5 provides. To the extent in any year during the limitation period, that they would owe more under the agreement than what they would pay in taxes, then that amount, that excess amount, will be deferred and carried forward to the next school year. And to the extent they have tax savings available in the next school year, then they will make those, they will pay those deferred payments and get caught up. We don't believe that should happen in any year but the first year for limitation period, and then thereafter, they should have plenty of tax savings remaining to pay up for anything else that would have become due us to that point. Section 6.6 is the option to terminate. Real quick is, there could be a lot of moving parts in this project, and they want to make sure that they are able to build this project, and so if they can't, they don't want to have to be stuck paying supplemental payments of $50,000 a year for 15 years. So what they have is the unilateral right to terminate this agreement at any time up to the start of that limitation. to the start of that limitation period, which we know is January 1 of 2023. So, if they are unable or decide not to build this project, then they can terminate this agreement, and they move on down the road, and no more money is owed to the school district except for those, except for anything that might have accrued up to that point. Additionally, if during the course of this agreement that school law changes, school finance becomes different, and on an annual basis, from year to year to year, it looks like they will owe more under the agreement than what they would owe in taxes, again, they would have the option to terminate this agreement and then just become an ordinary taxpayer. The district would not get any supplemental payments, it would just tax this project as if the agreement were never in place. Any savings they had up to that point would remain, and they would pay full taxes both on the unknown side and the INS side from that point forward, just like any other taxpayer would. Section 6.7, I do want to point that out, that is a deferral. We know that there are going to be two supplemental payments that accrue for years 2021 and 2022 before the limitation period begins. That is the time that they will be constructing this project. What they've asked is that during that time, that the payments to $50,000 supplemental payments that become owing don't become due until January 31 of 2023. This is not out of the ordinary. We see this typically in a lot of agreements, when the property is not producing any income, they are cash strapped a little bit and asked to defer those payments. So, they will still be made, they just won't be made any year since they actually accrue. Finally, if they exercise some option to terminate in the middle of the agreement, we do have a provision there that they would pay any remaining supplemental payments at that time. So, they would become an ordinary taxpayer, but if they quit in year six of the agreement, and there's still seven years, eight years of supplemental payments left, they would pay those supplemental payments every year when they would normally become due, and pay their regular taxes at that point. Again, that's a provision in Section 6.6. Real quick, Article 8, and Article 8, you can find some of their additional obligations that we've already talked about, so I won't belabor them. But again, 8.1, they have to maintain that viable presence. Section 8.2, there's annual reporting requirements to verify their eligibility, and then they meeting everything they need to do under the agreement. That's Section 8.2. Data requests by the comptroller, they have to submit additional information requested. We know that the auditor may conduct random audits, and they have to comply with those. And then again, just point out in Section 8.7, if they've made any false statements or breached their representations, that would be a basis to terminate this agreement. Again, if it terminates, then it would be subject to some penalties to repay in tax incentives that they received so far. Articles 9 and 10 have to do with breach of remedy if they fail to meet those obligations. Article 10 is your typical boilerplate language with regards to just about every contract. It does have a provision, if the agreement needs to be amended, there was a formal process to go through. It's a little complicated, but again, the cost of having the district to work through that is something that would be paid by the applicant. That's basically your Chapter 313 agreement, if you guys should choose to discuss it tonight. Before I finish up our last couple of things, do you guys have any other questions about that agreement? It's a little cumbersome, I know.
All the board members are gay.
We're good to go, Scott?
Yes, we're at all the board members are gay.
Okay, great. I heard you really well that time. Okay, so we were finishing up, we checked that there are no conflicts of interest, we did that at the very beginning. Board finding number 18, we are in the home stretch, is that for listening to everything that Chris presented to you evening, after going through the finding of facts and having to listen to the go through the whole round agreement, that you guys, if you approve and adopt this resolution, you'll make a determination that it's in the best interest of the district and the state to approve Blue Jay Solar White's application and enter into the agreement that we just went over. And finally, board finding number 19 is an acknowledgement that once we negotiated the terms of this agreement, we had submitted it back to the comptroller. They have reviewed it, they confirmed that it complies with all the requirements of Chapter 313, and it can be approved by the board. And so, those are our findings of fact and your agreements. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I will sit quietly.
Any questions, board members? If not, then I'm going to hand over to you and make my motion. Mr. Scorer, we didn't have any additional questions or comments or statements, so I'm going to make a motion. I move that the board approve the resolution adopting findings of fact as presented relating to the application of Blue Jay Solar LLC for appraised value limitation on qualified property. That such resolution and findings as presented be executed by the board president and made a part of the minutes of this meeting, and that Blue Jay Solar LLC's application be approved, all in accordance with Chapter 313 of the Texas Tax Code.
Should I make the motion instead of reading all to you? That's the motion. I'm making the motion pending the seconds, I'll have more discussion or questions from the board members. No discussion, no further. Motion carries 7-0. Look at item number 10. You want to cover up for item number 10? Item number 10?
I don't have anything additional to add to what we already went up or received and channed up.
I move that the board approve the agreement for limitation on appraised value of the property for school district maintenance and operation taxes pursuant to Chapter 313 of the Texas Tax Code with Blue Jay Solar LLC, and authorize the board president to execute the agreement on behalf of the district's behalf, and direct the superintendent to take such other actions as may be required under Chapter 313 of the Texas Tax Code or the comptroller's related rules.
Motion is seconded, and discussion on item 10.
I would like to say one thing. I think financially this is a no-brainer. If we have other agreements like this, I would like to see that we have a much more in-depth notification process of the people that are in the reinvestment zone, so that we don't have another situation like we did at the past meeting. But I think that, you know, for the first agreement, this is a wonderful opportunity.
Motion is seconded, no further. Motion carries 7-0.
Good guys, we've done nine to 10 now. You can hang around for the rest of our meeting if you would like.
I appreciate the offer, but I think it's nothing to be done with.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Hey, while I'm here, just checking that we'll go back to item number three, which you consent agenda, anybody wish to pull a guy?
On the level of this department? On the level of this year? Office of Bitchmore, paper date, $9,101, and 15 seats. Here is the level and the chance. About three pages over. I was kind of wondering why we would spend additional money on leveling. We do have leveling assessments that comes with our program that we adopted, the teachers agree on, and why we could spend an additional $1,000 for leveling assessment for that?
I believe Mrs. Juisky, as our elementary principal, had made the decision to use Montes' benchmarking after discussing this with teachers, and we needed updated kits, so that's why those were purchased. As a principal, she made the decision to use that system for benchmarking, and it needed to be updated, so that's why that purchase was made.
But we do have one, and so I guess that's my question, is the teachers that gave that for a year, that palated that for a year, was there a take on that?
I don't have that information in front of me.
And so, I'm just, I guess pulling the note on it?
Wait.
I mean...
Do not vote to approve the purchase.
I don't approve, so I don't approve it, so what do I do actually?
I guess vote against it.
Vote against it, consider it a hold, consider it a no, or is the bill's paid?
You vote it. This is no longer part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
But Mr. Martin, this has been made, so there's nothing to vote on there.
I'm just not sure what all teachers were included with this decision, what teachers were asked, and what I mean. We're spending additional money where it's already included in the program we have that we used our, we used our state allotment money for. So, now we're spending additional $9,000 for leveling. That seems a lot expensive just for leveling. I don't know what else is wrong.
Okay, but we've been having this conversation about benchmarking and leveling at the elementary level for years now. Again, it's Mrs. Juisky's decision as campus principal to decide what her campus is going to use for our leveling. She has decided on Montes now, and again, those kits need to be updated, so that's why the purchase was made.
I was just, the information that you said that you didn't have available, did you circulate to all of us?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Scorer, I think consent agenda, act of improvement, dispersion, we'll pull out the consent agenda. Now, much of the consent agenda is down to one of the dispersion. And motion ready? Second one is strong, opposed and voted, any discussion?
Would the resident consent agenda or the president?
This is consent agenda excluding monthly dispersion. Your vote is the consent agenda excluding monthly dispersion.
Okay, we're voting on consent agenda excluding this.
Correct. Another favor, resident. That motion carries 7-0. We will now consider the monthly dispersion for separate, if we need motions accepted.
Now, monthly dispersion.
We'll remove the monthly dispersion, we'll fill that out for that to be accepted. A motion to approve the monthly dispersion? A motion by Kennedy, I'll second. Opposed and voted, approve the monthly dispersion as presented. Motion, opposed, adjourned, make the motion, carries 5-2, two exemptions. Item number four, Kansas District 4. Mr. Fowler, would you like to go?
All right, welcome everybody. So, we do have a lot of great things going on that I'd like to announce at the high school. Right now, currently, our enrollment is up to 234. Our junior high enrollment is up to 96, a very large seventh grade with 56 kids in it. And our high school is up to 138, so our enrollment is up this year, so our kids are doing well. Our band did their concert, their UYL region marching contest on November 7. They received a Division 2. So, apparently, this is on a scale from 1 to 5. 1 is perfect, 5 is not perfect. We got a 2, which she said would be considered excellent. So, they're very proud of how we did there, we showed up very well, and so our band did great. We're very excited about that, how they're doing. In athletics, football, we had a heartbreaking game on Saturday in Atlanta. The boys played hard, they had a real tough team that they're up against, and they gave up. So, we were really, really proud of how they did, and how they fought, and they just, they have, they really, they just showed their heart out there, and we're really proud. They had a really good season, they were 4-4, 4-2 in district, so they did really good. Our volleyball team, who is still in the playoffs, has their semifinal game tomorrow night at Anan consol versus Thrall at 7:00 p.m. We have 250 tickets, you have to buy them at the door. Parents will have their set aside, they'll be reserved for direct family, so those will already be reserved for parents. So, make sure to get there early. I believe they're only selling tickets on the side for each fan base, but we haven't been given that absolute, so make sure to get there early, get your tickets to get in. And they are currently 28-1 right now, so they're doing fabulous. Basketball's starting up, they've already started practicing, I think, I guess about a week and a half. Their games will start next week. Boys will be on the 24th, they play at Ranger. 12:00 p.m. is JV for varsity, 115. Vengor will start the week after, on December 1. Our first game will be versus Latexo, will be here at Iowa, and that's at 6:00 p.m. Some of the great things our kids are doing, student council is now making announcements every morning, and they're also doing a new program called BulVog, our Students of the Month. So, students get up to, they have a little QR code that they take a picture of, vote for a student, say something good that student's done. They're also doing a teacher showcase every month, so they get to kind of vote on teachers, and then they have to tell what great things that teacher did, and then they draw, and do a showcase of teacher each month. So, student council has really done a lot of great things this year, changed some things, and so I want to thank Ms. Passion, she's really done a great job with that. Another shout-outs to our new art teacher, Mrs. Rob Glass. She's been displaying all of her students' artwork all over the building, and we keep getting shout-outs from all the other teachers, they're seeing how wonderful it is. These kids are doing some amazing work, I mean, I really am impressed. So, it's really a great day to be a Bulldog, so a lot of great stuff for that, except for that.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Apologize to the board and the audience, Mrs. Juisky's not feeling well this evening, so she's not here to give her elementary report. Superintendent reporting only have three items. The first one is a reminder that we will have a call meeting on Monday, November 30. Actually, in road, our auditors will be here to present our financial audit for the 2019-2020 school year. Second item I have here is a reminder again for the board that we have scheduled required board training December 2, so that's, we'll meet on that Monday night, we'll meet on Wednesday evening as well for our EISO training, which was formerly 1566, came from House Bill 3, required, so they've changed the name on us, EISO stands for Evaluating and Improving Student Outcomes. We'll have that training if all eight or all seven board members are present. We also are allowed to receive credit for our team of aides training at that time. Mr. John Conlon will be here to do that for us, and since he worked with us on developing our board goals, we're going to ask him to spend a little extra time, and we will review our board goals, edit those, and discuss with him our required HP3 goals. So, a lot going on that night, Mr. Conlon will be here to walk us through that. Last thing I have, just to let you guys know what's going on, so our attendance projections for school years 2021 through 2022, and 2022 through 2023, our attendance projections are already due for those two years, so I've got to submit that by December 14. Obviously, we'll look at the training pattern of our district for the last couple of years. We'll also take into account anything, any way that COVID has impacted us. And we'll get that number submitted to T E A in a timely fashion, obviously by the December fourteenth deadline. And again, remember, as we've set through budget workshops and many meetings, we talked about how this attendance projection will even play a role in our first report. So you got to follow it in a certain percentage range when you project that attendance. So fun times. It's a great, it's a great day to be a Bulldog, like Mr. Fowler said. But that's all I have, just superintendent report.
Item number five, generation of through the local P I C college and faculty.
Ms. Harris, the board, you're.
All right, so you probably read through my situation. But basically because of COVID affecting our spring twenty twenty, we chose not to include that in our ranking D P A for that year. So as we started getting new students beginning in the, what about these ones getting that are coming to it? Also, a lot of schools were doing a P for just passing, so there was no big way to factor that in. So I talked to Tazby and pulled this policy and it was five years old. So started looking at that and just deciding that some updating need to be made. You only going to go through these? Is there any questions you guys had and did what you're?
I do know what you mean. I see where you addressed the graduate years twenty twenty-four and twenty-three.
Yes.
When we talked about this last year with the number about twenty twenty-four to eighth graders that were in algebra one.
Correct, some of those high school courses are.
Are they, they take them into account for the girls as well?
So yes, actually, we did, we got one new eighth grader and I applied the same factor that we did to our kids for that.
It is, it is.
Yes.
Can, can you go into a little bit more for me on the exception? I mean, I understand some kids did poorly, but others did well during that time. But just the difference of learning methods. What, what is the purpose of, of attention? I mean, we always have those issues.
Yeah, so that was just, well, that was what we decided last year in the spring at the end of the year that, hey, we're going to waive this, we're not going to factor it in all, all of last semester. So the exception in the policy is just to add it so that transferring students will have the same thing applied. Because that was, that was a decision.
Some of the factors that played into that. Yes, we always have that situation where some students do well and others don't. That's in a fundamental playing field when everyone has access to the classroom with a teacher. You have students that choose to benefit from that and students that choose to not take advantage of it. The playing field in spring is not leveled because of devices or quality, quality of devices or lack of devices or inability to walk on. So there's a lot of factors that were out of everyone's control. The schools, the parents, the kids. So that, those are the things that played into, into affecting that decision.
So essentially what I wanted to make sure is that any students moving in didn't get an advantage over our current students that we decided to give, so that everybody is on an equal. So then when I started talking to the neighboring districts, I was seeing that there was a discrepancy in, a lot of districts were already offering our credit on five point O, I mean, a six point O scale. And we've only been on a five. So we wanted to make sure we put a bigger distinction between those kids that are taking this level of rigor. And when you introduce something like that, you always do it as a cohort so that it affects those kids in that same graduating class.
Do you have any questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Second. Scott, in further discussion. Further discussion doesn't matter right here. Motion period seven O. Item number two. Situation called, we'll read them in a little bit.
Well, I hope this will pass this, as I've mentioned it several times. All this is just that we were able to schedule, actually, in road, our auditor for them to be here November thirtieth. So I just ask the board through the call meeting for November thirtieth.
I mean, who called me, who told me to turn?
Second.
Motion second. We have a private meeting now. Further discussion on that. Doesn't matter right here. Motion period seven O. Item number seven, situation changing, they will cancel the simple course.
Our regular board meetings are scheduled for the third Monday of each month. In the month of December, that third Monday is the first day of Christmas break for our district. So I'm just asking that the board make a motion to either change the date, the board cancel the December board meeting. Change the history as being canceled that December meeting.
Any conversation, discussion on preference for changing or reschedule? I think we're going to have another, it's not a meeting for, we have the training, we have the training.
Got it. So you, you're going to have two more meetings. You play November thirty and December second for your training. Just that. We have two meetings or three. It's up to you.
I think they're pressing, might have just canceled the December meeting if it's all out of workshop on the training on December second.
You see the motion?
Second.
Motion to cancel the December regular scheduled December. Second, I read it. Further discussion. Doesn't matter right here. Motion period seven O. Item number two. Situation changing, can you move it to March?
Yes. So again, our regularly scheduled meeting falls on the third Monday of each month. If you look at our school calendar that's there behind this page in your board package, you'll see that your January meeting would normally fall on N L K holiday. The February meeting would fall on President's holiday. And the March meeting would fall during spring break. So I may recommend that date changes for those. And just ask the board to approve changing those dates for January, February, and March.
Motion by Scott. Can we, any discussion?
I, I do want to say, I think everybody knows my position on making sure that we have our, our meetings on a scheduled date. I understand this reason. And I find witnesses were doing it well in advance. But if we're going to continue to have this problem, just like you discussed, the potential of us looking at moving our, our regular scheduled meeting, if it's going to fall in so many of these, I, I would encourage us to do that. Because we need to, we need to be regular so people know where to come and when to come. So that we can handle it in front of everybody.
Any further discussion? We will say, they, they're in their fact, they, to the volume of the original day rules, they are the same to. It looks like each other will move back. Except for two weeks, we're, we're marching, we'll move back two weeks. All right, those are favored, raise your hand. Motion period seven O. Item number one. Abbott ten, one hundred and one. Item number eleven, consideration community use of district facilities before the March.
This is just bringing it up for discussion. Really don't have to make a decision. So we all know that our high old youth athletics, our facilities, little diggers who used it beginning of the school year. And we appreciate the job they did. I know they did a lot of sanitizing between use. And the way they did it, they just played just I only, Iowa community members using our facilities during that time, which I didn't think was an issue. Those are the kids that are in the gyms every day anyway, Monday through Fridays, so not an issue. We've had little dribblers approach us about using the facilities. And the only difference is it's up for discussion whether we open it up to other communities coming in. So where little dribblers would host, Mangerson or Sewell should go for it on those weekend. They're not tournaments, but whatever, talk those weekend games. So I'm just curious to hear your board's thoughts on this. You know, I'm concerned because we see other districts around us right now, the number of COVID cases is spiking. And my responsibility as superintendent is to make sure we do what's right or what's best for our kids, our students, and our teachers. And that would be to keep our facilities as clean as possible right now. And my only concern is we open it up to other communities during those weekend games. And enforce all the protocols, masks, hands sanitizer, all those different things. But again, that's, I'm just mentioning that. I'd love to hear your board's thoughts on it.
First of all, sorry, I'll. It is a little concerning, but I don't think we're forced to make a decision today or even in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, we can get past Thanksgiving, come back, not having the issue in school. That's number one checkpoint. The scary part is the season starts after Christmas, which is when they've been gone for two weeks. And they'll tell them where they went, who they were around. So I mean, there's a lot of different options. And I know Lori does not want me to put her on the spot and I'm not going to call her up, but she's here. If y'all want to talk to her after the meeting, board members, community members, about what their protocols for disinfecting, what, what they might be thinking. She's here to talk to tonight or in the future, most of y'all have her number. And checking us here as well and several members from Dolly, you can play, but talk to her and see what they're thinking. I think the further we can push the decision off, the better we are because we'll have more data points to look at. The only thing about that is Lori, y'all typically meet in what, mid-December? My point, that's the right version, I can't see my space.
I can see another one, governor.
Okay. All right, mid-December for setting the district schedule, right?
It was put out today, December sixth will be the district meeting.
Okay. So they might want to talk too fast, but we need to give them some guidance on that. And this is kind of joking, but not joking, board members. I told Lori that they won't be chewing on her blood, remember, which close school one is going to be ours, they're chewing on it. So keep that in mind as well. We want them to be able to have that normalcy in their, you know, schedule too. That's a big part of what we do, the agenda, we have to do it same.
Has any of the, like Anderson, have they showed any interest wanting to open it up? They're going to open it up there?
Yeah, it's all over fast now, everybody can proceed for.
Yeah.
And that's what I talked to Mr. Fowler and Jason to vote that if we have consideration of moving forward, it is typically the adults who, 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 particularly that, how many kids we call them, to those. We were talking about maybe who have the most, they can read if that was the case, but they are state form. And I said, we can at least proceed for, we can all move back there and change things that we can cancel or we can play and announce that. Whatever we need to do, we can change if we proceed for, we can all move back. Y'all seemed at home and they knew that we're kind of outside on it and so.
And I think one way we could proceed here, since we're not really going to convene a meeting with that to be able to be on the agenda. If y'all will give y'all's feedback to the administrators and let them kind of deal with Lori, work, work through Mr. Fowler, Mr. Martindale. One thing Lori, we talked about an option is if the board were to decide their, give their opinion of letting y'all move forward, that is, that first game not be until late December, maybe early February, that way we have.
Right, like they, and that's what we all discussed too, that's maybe moving our whole team back to school then. And definitely talk about, you know, letting them get back to school for a couple of weeks. Where I start practice is all, because it's all in house, we're going to start practice by the next couple of weeks. That's in house practice only, but games do, we back to Holly in January for part of everything that happened here. As seeing how they can go.
Would you point, point those and send those to either Mr. Fowler or Martindale myself, so we can disperse them to the board or board members?
Sure.
Okay. Just because some of those things, I hadn't heard, so that's. That way I was trying to give your feedback and try to give y'all some direction. I know we got set to sixth, right? For the district meeting?
December sixth, and the town that her and her former are following U I L guidelines, fifty percent capacity. They don't pay, they don't physically schedule all anything. And so we can.
Who's making distinctions on outbreaks and stuff like that? Who's making distinctions on outbreaks and stuff like that? Or we relying on parents to be truthful? I'm, I'm just asking. Yeah, no, I mean, for games and if canceling games, moving games around? Okay, I'm just asking quickly. I'm not, not against that.
Lori, give you those to us and then board members, y'all want to talk to them and get some more info. If y'all have kind of, you know, better data than I did.
Yeah.
Bill Rivers, the organization, move back national. All I have to say is, I'm going to push to see that.
I don't understand why I have to go through one of those tall S P P's. You think it's. So does I Y A maybe call favor of what you said for school?
Were we, we were discussing her?
This, yeah, this discussion is simply about facility use by our community in general. But, you know, obviously that boils down to I Y A here, the, the organization, the community uses the most. And just like I said, and I agree with Jason, I want our kids to have as much normalcy in our community, as much normalcy as possible. But I do remember how upset the community was whenever we had to close the secondary a couple of months ago. And bring a community in and then an outbreak starts, we have to close the school. And it's not I Y A that's going to take the run of that, it's superintendent and board trustees. And that was not a fun week, if I remember correctly. So you just understand that. And again, our primary concern, we have to keep teachers and kids healthy. So what, I mean, this is good information, it's a good conversation because you guys letting us know that you're, you're already looking at pushing games back. And I agree with Jason too. Because what, I think the spike you're seeing right now has to do with people gathering for Halloween. Well, we're all about to gather for Thanksgiving, then we're all going to gather for Christmas. So pushing that back as much as possible, like you said, Lori, and let's see what's happening at that point in time. Fantastic. If it helps you guys with your December sixth meeting to create that schedule, then maybe that's what you need to do with the understanding that we may have to put the brakes on that in the future. But we can talk more about that, Mr. Fowler and ourselves.
What happens then? We, we.
Sure. I, I just wanted to take from these seven because, like I said, if something happens and we have to go to remote learning, again, these seven and myself are the ones that are going to hear about that. Ms. G.
We can still enforce, we do other people coming in because of government order, but we still enforce that mask. He said, don't worry, he's a prayer machine between ages, can we still do that right now? And he's telling they can't come in, they're extended older without a mask?
Yes, now, you can attempt those things. If you look around, U I L events, we try to enforce those too. Sometimes you get some.
That'd be something, that'd be something that y'all's meeting that y'all could talk about, you know, like a facility. You're enforcing the mask rule and things like that.
Right, and that's just one way to, where to refer to her kids' age and everything.
Alec, please.
Yeah, Lori. If, if we were to say, no, you're not going to use the facilities, how would y'all move forward? Would, would, would y'all still go to the other schools?
If we need to practice.
Yeah, well, I mean, the point I'm trying to make is, is if, if we close the, the option for you using, they're still going to go to the other schools and those babies are going to come back to school next year. And these are still the, these are still the schools that we play in junior high and high school ball. So they're big brothers and big sisters, we bring them back. So I don't know that there's any way that if there's an outbreak, we're going to be able to say it was because we had I Y A. I think, I mean, I, I think that pushing it back is a great idea. I think you can say that we require the additional, you know, steps that have already been taken. Maybe even limiting the, you know, if your game's not coming, right now, you're not.